Good evening, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Welcome to the first 2022-2023 Budget Workshop Meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start by explaining the format of tonight's meeting. The Board of Education provides two opportunities for you to express your ideas and share your thoughts. The first will be after we receive an update from our superintendent. The second will be after the Pledge of Allegiance. Each session will be thirty minutes in duration, and all speakers will be limited to three minutes to give as many people a chance to speak as possible. Please approach the microphone in front of the auditorium. Please state your name prior to beginning your comments so that the district clerk can accurately reflect the minutes of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Rogers will let you know when you have thirty seconds left, so you can wrap up your comments before the end of the three minutes. You must be stationed at a microphone to express your ideas and share your thoughts with the Board. The Board of Education respects the varied opinions of the community and will provide a comfortable and safe environment. Any behaviors that threaten the integrity of tonight's meeting will not be tolerated and will cause the Board of Education to adjourn the meeting. Complaints or challenges should follow procedures listed under Policies 1400, 1410, and/or 1440, which are included on the materials table. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. The first ten rows in the auditorium should use the exit to my left. Those in the back of the room should use the rear doors and exit the building to the left. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. Each individual speaker will have three minutes in which to answer their questions or to make any statements. The district clerk will hold the timer. For us, if we do not get to all of the speakers during the first thirty minutes, we will reopen later in the evening to continue. The meeting is now open. Okay, thank you everyone for your comments and concerns. Mr. Defendini, would you please kick off the start of the budget season?
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. It is amazing to imagine that it has been a year, and it has been quite the year, but we are back again into our budget cycle and our budget season. And we are excited for this year's budget season. We've already started some preliminary conversations with the Board, sharing some basic information about our planning process and what we hope to achieve as we plan for the upcoming 2022-2023 school year. COVID has certainly left its scar on us. Challenges that have come as a result of that, terrible pandemic, have really caused us to look very deeply at some of our program offerings, the way in which we provide social-emotional services for our students, while at the same time having a deep responsibility to balance the community's ability, knowing the current economic environment, to bear whatever increases there are in taxes. I am very proud of Mr. Motisi and the work that he has done getting us ready for this evening's presentation. He's worked extensively with the administrative team over the course of the last several months. This process actually began all the way back in December, leading to tonight, which is the first presentation. As always, our budget cycle will be a transparent cycle. Already, the community has access to tons of documents online that they can review at their leisure. Information surrounding the detailed budget line by line. Staffing documents, documents that help the community to understand how to read the budget are all contained. You know, will shortly be available to the public for their review. Again, I remind the Board that this is an interactive process, right? This is step one. This is day one. We're just beginning the process today. We have some already before we've even begun. You know, we have some things that we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint that we'll be looking at over the course of the next several weeks before the Board of Education actually gets to the point where they adopt the budget. But the process is not only interactive with the Board of Education, the process is interactive with the community. We want the community to ask questions. Our proudest moment is always when a community member goes to the polls in May. They get behind, well, they don't get behind the screen anymore. They used to get behind the screen. I'm dating myself. They get ready to fill in their bubble sheet, and they know what it is that they're voting on. They have a pretty good understanding, as a result of the work that we've done, to feel confident in deciding on how they want to vote when they do choose to vote for the budget. So again, this is step one, part of a long-term process. I'll turn it over to Mike, who will take you through a number of slides. There are many slides tonight, but this is, again, the first blush at the budget. It does provide a basic overview of what we're looking at for the upcoming school year. So without further ado, Mr. Motisi, get us started, please.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini. So tonight's presentation is centered around the revenue and expenditure side of the budget. Here's a brief description of tonight's agenda. We're going to briefly talk about our budget goals, dive into the revenue and expenditures, or more commonly known as the appropriations, and then a little bit about our contingent budget and proposed legislation that is out there currently. So for our 2022-2023 budget goals, so normally these vary slightly from year to year. This year, I wanted to discuss with the public something that I haven't done in the past, which is each year I write a memo to the Board of Education, and each budget cycle has its own theme. And I always think of a quote or find a quote that comes to me in the months leading up to this point that just hits me as to what this budget season was all about. And there was one that really stuck out to me, and it's up there on the screen. And it says, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest," by Benjamin Franklin. And that quote really spoke to me this year, based on the work that we had done. And really, from a financial position, I couldn't be happier with the results of where we are and how we've gotten there. But also, we were able to address the increasing need for student support services. And that was something that really hit us hard this year coming out of the pandemic. So as we move from pandemic to endemic, we noticed a significant shift in this need by our students. And we were able to meet those needs, and I'm going to take you through that a little bit tonight. Sorry, one second, please. So the budget always starts out with the revenue, revenue side of when we design it. When we start to design our budget, we look at the revenue first. Revenues are the funds necessary to support the programs and the district's facilities and operations. And then the fund balance and reserves are the district's savings. Those are our, those reserves and fund balances allow us to offset taxes. They also allow us to be able to pay a lot of our monthly bills without the need for any type of short-term borrowing. So if you're looking at our revenue from, if you look at it from this perspective of a triangle or pyramid, the base of the pyramid is the property taxes and pilot. Those make up approximately seventy-six percent of the district's revenues, and they are controlled, or I should say restricted, by the state. So the property taxes are restricted according to the tax cap calculation, and pilots are a part of that calculation and also restricted by any type of pilot agreement that the district, that the towns are entered into. Next, you have the state aid, which is completely controlled by the state. Some of it's formula-based, some of it is expensed or reimbursable. But that, again, is also controlled by the state and by the laws of New York State. And then the variable other category of three percent is pretty insignificant or immaterial to a budget our size. But nonetheless, it does make up a small portion of the revenue, and it does stay consistent from year to year. And we're going to talk a little bit about what those other revenue categories are as we go through the revenue slides. So the largest portion of the revenue budget is the taxes. And taxes make up, as I mentioned earlier, the base of our revenue sources. And on the screen for you right now, on page seven, is the historical budget and financial data for the district. For the past ten years, you'll notice that the Farmingdale School District has had a ten-year average levy increase of 1.75. And just by coincidence, that is the same exact levy increase as the ten-year average for Nassau County. The next slide, historical budget and financial data. I wanted to take a moment to highlight the tremendous support that we get from the community each year. The numbers speak for themselves, and I just had to make sure I took a moment to thank the entire community for their support. These numbers speak volumes in terms of the work that we do, both programmatically, instructionally, and financially. So as you are all aware, we live in the era of the tax cap calculation. The New York State tax cap was implemented about a decade ago, and it's commonly referred to as the two percent cap. And that is not entirely true. So it is two percent in terms of CPI, and we're going to walk through that calculation in a couple of minutes. But the CPI is not the only factor that goes into this calculation. And each district has their own specific levy calculation, which can result in more or less than two percent of a levy legally being allowed with only a fifty percent voter approval. This is further complicated once the levy is ultimately approved by the voters when it gets to the county level and then gets allocated amongst the different classes of property. Now, we have a unique situation in Farmingdale because we have both the County of Nassau and the County of Suffolk that we levy taxes in, and they both have different sets of ways of allocating those taxes to the individual properties. In Nassau County, we're all aware of filing, grieving, or assessed value. And that process is one of the many factors that contributes to why, let's just argue, a two percent increase in a school levy does not necessarily translate to a two percent increase in a levy on a household. So you could have two houses that are right next to each other, who, one may see a point or a point and a half increase in their levy, and the other may see no increase in their school taxes because of the way the allocation happens at the county level. That is something that is completely out of the district's control. And it's a more lengthy conversation that I do in the fall with the Board of Education and with the public to kind of walk the residents through how the school district tax levy ultimately translates onto their tax bills. So here is Farmingdale's specific tax levy limit calculation, and I just want to take a moment to kind of walk through the numbers on this page. It's, there's a little bit more detail that goes into this when you have to actually calculate the numbers for the state. But in short, you start out by taking the twenty-one, twenty-two tax levy, and you multiply it by the tax-based growth factor, which is a number that is given to us from the state. That number is basically an indication of the rate at which the brick-and-mortar-type infrastructure and buildings in the community are improving. You then add in the twenty-one, twenty-two, or the current year's estimated pilots payments or payments in lieu of taxes, and you subtract out the estimated capital local expenditures net of any building aid that the district is receiving from the state. So that capital local expenditures includes any debt service that the district has, plus any transfer to capital items that are included in the prior year's budget, netted against the building aid that the district receives as a form of state aid. Ultimately, that number is then multiplied by the lesser of the CPI or two percent. As we all know, the CPI this year has been flying for the last few months, and that the 2021 calendar year did end with a CPI greater than four percent. So the tax cap was limited to the full two percent CPI when making this calculation. You then subtract out the estimated pilots for next year and to come to a limit of four exclusions, and then you get to add back in any exclusions that are included, again, at that capital local level, which is the debt service, the ninety-nine-fifty transfers, and the net of the building aid. The ultimate maximum allowable levy is, for Farmingdale, is one hundred and thirty-four point three million. That number is the current proposed percentage increase of two point zero six, which is what was transmitted to the, to New York State on March first, as is required. I want to take a moment to really highlight that we, as a district, are extremely mindful of the challenging times that everyone is facing. I know that each one of us feels it every time we go to the grocery store or we put gasoline in our cars. And that I just wanted to make sure that we reiterate the work that we've been doing with the admin team and the work that we're going to continue to do with the Board throughout this entire process, including over the next week. We're going to really roll our sleeves up to make sure that we can get that number somewhere closer to the current Nassau County proposed average, which, again, by coincidence, is one point seven five again. So currently, what all the Nassau County districts have submitted is around one point seven five, the average. We're going to try to get there or under, even better, if we can, because we know what everyone is going through. We all feel it every single day, every single week when we're shopping for groceries and at the pump. So this is just a proposal for right now. This is just the current proposed. This was our maximum. But again, by next week, I believe that we're going to have that number lower for the Board and ultimately have something lower for the Board to adopt at the April sixth meeting. Quick summary of our projected pilot properties. There's about four and a half million dollars that is projected for next year, the largest portion of that being the LIPA properties. We've had very little come on the rolls this year. There were two, two small properties in Babylon that came on. But most of the increase year over year is a result of those increases or pilots that have gotten older. So as pilot properties get older, they end up paying more towards their full abated value, which then is a larger number that the district gets in terms of pilot payments, but less in terms of levy. Again, going back to the way the tax levy calculation works. Moving on to state aid, the governor's proposal. So each year, each year we get the governor's proposal early, early on in the budget process, and then they go through a legislative process. And by the time the state budget is approved, we do get a final number. Usually, there is additional state aid included in that number. But we should have that number on or about the time when the Board adopts the budget, hopefully sooner. But as far as the way state aid works, there's basically three types of packages. There's unrestricted foundation aid, which is, unrestricted, which is foundation and high-tax aid, reimbursement and expense-driven aids, and then categorical grants. So on to our formula-based aids. Foundation aid is the largest portion of the state aid that the school district receives. This was the, this was the big news last year, right? When the, when the state decided to fully fund the foundation aid formula. For Farmingdale, just to give you a point of reference, and I've been talking about this for years with my budget presentations and with the Legislative Action Committee. The amount of aid that is owed per year to the Farmingdale School District is about eight and a half million dollars. This foundation aid formula was designed over a decade ago. And if that formula had been allowed to run the way it was originally designed, that would have been eight and a half million dollars more each year in state aid that the district would have received. That's a lot of money. And it's great that it's finally been fully funded, because now we'll have, ultimately, after the twenty-three, twenty-four year, eight and a half million dollars more in state aid to help support our programs and services. And when we get to the appropriations, I'm going to talk a little bit about how huge this was and what this allowed us to accomplish with the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Lastly, is the high-tax aid on the formula-based aids. It's been frozen since thirteen fourteen, and basically, high-tax aid is used to offset high taxes that are in school districts. So what they do is they look at something called a combined wealth ratio to determine how, quote-unquote, wealthy a district is compared to the average of the state. And that is ultimately one of the factors that's included in deriving this number of state aid. The other categories are reimbursable aid categories. It includes transportation aid, BOSI's aid, public excess cost, private excess cost, which is related. Those two categories are related to special education services. There's a process known as the STACK process, and whenever a special education student reaches a certain threshold, over, over a certain threshold, we do get reimbursement for that from the state. The transportation aid and the BOSI's aid are both reimbursable expenses based off of the prior year expenses. So anything that's expensed in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is ultimately paid out in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as a percentage that is based on a formula that the state has. And then lastly, there's the categorical and grant categories of aids. These are our Title I grants, our IDEA, IDEA six-eleven and six-nineteen, six-nineteen grants. And most notably this year is the Universal Pre-K Grant. So the district had always received an allotment of a little over four hundred thousand dollars to run a half-day program. We did receive an additional three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to start to improve upon that program. We are working with the state currently on the grant. It is a grant process, so we're working with the state on that grant to kind of figure out all the specifics of it and how that program has to look. So we will have more to report out on that at a later time, but there is more to come regarding the UPK funding. regarding the UPK funding. This is a summary of year-over-year budgeted state aid, just to highlight how big of a number that foundation aid is. Right at the top, the 3. almost $5 million that we are scheduled to receive next year. We received about $2.5 million of it this year. That is a huge number that's ultimately helping out to help fund our programs and our services for next year. And going down the line, the BOSI's aid, the public excess cost aid, those numbers tend to fluctuate based on, as I mentioned earlier, the expenses and the services that are ultimately utilized. And then further down the line, the transportation aid, that really is a reflection of us coming out of the pandemic and how transportation kind of had that one year where there was a change, where we were using a lot less busing, and now we're back to a full busing schedule. So what you're seeing there is a projection based off of our current year expenses with Some of the other forms of revenues that are included in the budget include smaller categories, but worth mentioning. Tuitions, so the district receives tuitions for foster or special education from other districts, depending on where their district of origin is, so that we can bill for certain services. There is the rental of property. BOSI's does rent. The BOSI's rents a couple of classrooms from us over Woodward Parkway, and then the use of facilities and the outside organizations that use our buildings make up about $125,000 of our estimated revenue for next year. Medicaid reimbursements, we do have a process. We work with a consultant to make sure that we're properly filing all of our Medicaid paperwork, and there is ultimately a process on the backend at the state level to reimburse the district for any Medicaid-eligible expenditures as it relates to students. And then lastly, the last thing I want to highlight on this page is the fund balance and reserves. We've increased the application from the previous year. Last year, we used $3 million of appropriated fund balance. This year, we are applying $5 million to help balance the budget. This money really allows the district a lot of flexibility in terms of paying its bills and what-if situations. So every year, there's always, almost every year, there's a situation that comes up that we did not foresee. The biggest culprit is usually workers' comp claims that we're not able to foresee, and the ability, having the ability to utilize this appropriated fund balance makes sure that we don't hurt the programs and services of the district. Additionally, this allows us the ability to pay our bills on time, and by on time, I mean without having to go out for debt. So often, districts that don't have strong financial positions are required to take out short-term borrowings in the form of a RAN or a TAN, which is a revenue or a tax anticipation note, and you pay interest on that money as you're waiting to get paid. So revenue doesn't come in for school districts on a steady basis like a paycheck. It comes in waves. It comes when the state has money, it comes when the towns have money, and it comes on a schedule. And there are times of the year where districts are very low. For us, and for most districts, the lowest time of the year is in October. And appropriating this fund balance each year and designing our budget so allows us the ability to make sure that we're able to always pay those bills and not have to go out for the borrowings that some districts have to do. Some miscellaneous revenue categories that continue to complete the revenue budget. Interfund revenue, that is $450,000. That's really what that is, is the general fund fronting certain benefits or the expenses for certain benefits in the cafeteria fund, and then ultimately, the cafeteria fund is paying the general fund back. So this is an accounting for that transaction, and it's showing the income coming into the revenue or coming into the general fund. The next biggest item on there is the refunds of prior years. Typically, that's a surplus from BOSI's, so because we are a part of a cooperative, they are required each year to allocate their surpluses to the districts that are in their cooperative. And every year, we get that check later on after the school year, after they've closed out their books, and we're able to deposit that and record that as revenue. In total, the miscellaneous revenue makes up just over $1 million of the revenue budget. So once again, here's just a snapshot of revenue year-over-year. There is a hundred, we went from $174.9 million budget to a $183.4 million budget, again, with a current proposed levy increase of 2.06, and it is our hope and our will to make sure that we get that number lower the next time we meet to have our second budget meeting. Moving on to the appropriation side, the first slide, Slide 24, is discussing the 22-23 salaries. So year-over-year, the budgeted increase in salaries is a reflection of step increases, increased staffing needs, and two years' worth of contract settlements. So at the end of the 2021 school year, there was, all of our bargaining units' contracts had expired. We have since settled with all of our units. That includes the 21-22 year and forward. They all are four- to five-year contracts that have been agreed upon, and the budget increase is showing, is reflecting two years of increases in there, plus step. Below is a chart of just an example of some of the contractual settlements that were reached and the associated step that is, and the fact that the step is also built into the 22-23 budgeted salary number. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we had noticed a significant shift in the needs of students, and I felt it was important to, again, highlight that investment in knowledge pays the best interest. And this shift in the student needs was something that, it was a concerted effort on our part to make sure that we did what was right from an instructional side, to make sure that we had the positions in place for these students. So what we did is we focused and responded to the post-pandemic-related gaps associated with academics, social-emotional services, and lost in-person learning opportunities. In addition, we saw a significant shift in the special education side over the past couple of years, and we've added additional staff to make sure that we addressed those The next line item in the budget is the benefits. We did see a significant increase this year in the health insurance premiums for the major medical. The premiums had increased almost 13% since the year before. That is the largest increase that we've seen in a while. We do believe, based on our conversations with NYSIP, that it is being driven by increased participation by people after the pandemic to go into elective surgeries, to go to the doctor more, to really just make sure that they're staying current with all of their medical stuff. And in addition, there's increased prices that are being charged because of all of additional services. So the healthcare industry really took its toll the last couple of years because of the pandemic, and ultimately, it seems that that cost is now making its way into the medical insurance part of our lives. The TRS and ERS, which is the next largest employee benefit, really stayed steady last year. We saw no increase in the ERS, which is the employees' retirement system, and for the teachers' retirement system, we saw a slight increase. So we were able to easily manage that increase with the, as I mentioned earlier, the additional state aid that we've been receiving and the favorable numbers in the years before. Also to mention, you know, the market had been doing really well. I don't know how much exactly it drives those numbers, but there is a correlation, and if the market continues the way it is right now, we do expect to see that there might be some shifting towards the increase side with the ERS and TRS, but once we have more information from the pension systems, we'll be sure to update the board on that. Some additional benefits that are built in FICA and Medicare, which is pretty straightforward in terms of how we calculate it and how we budget for it, because it's a percentage of salaries. It's driven by what we're required to pay by payroll laws. Workers' compensation, another benefit, this 1.5 million, which is driven obviously by our premiums that we have to pay. And then the other employee benefits, disability insurance, dental, optical, flexible benefits, unemployment, life insurance, and certain retirement benefits make up about 1.8 million of the benefits category. I wanted to briefly discuss our transportation contract. We are now entering for the 22-23 school year, our third year of our five-year contract with Educational Bus. We are budgeting about $7.7 million for next year for our contract transportation. This is the highest year of the five years in terms of increases, at 6.5%. Each other year was and is going forward is a 4% increase in their services. I do want to highlight one thing about Educational Bus, is that our contract is, does include gasoline. So I know we had, I had mentioned earlier, and it's something that's on everyone's mind, that gasoline prices keep going up and up and up. That is built into our current contract with Educational Bus, so it's not something, it's not something where this number is going to significantly change due to gas prices. That's not the way the contract is written. So for next year, we are at a 6.5%. We're budgeting about $7.7 million for those services. Some of our smaller contracts are related to athletics and co-curricular and field trips. We, $280,000 for those, and our private and parochial schools, approximately 1.3 million for a total transportation budget of $9.2 million. The BOSI's transportation is actually a separate line item. It's specifically for our BOSI students. It hits a BOSI's code in terms of how it's allocated to the budget. It doesn't hit our transportation code, which is why we pulled it out of that 9.2, because it's, I wanted to, I wanted to show the board what those numbers are. That number also has increased year-over-year in accordance with the BOSI's contracts. We no longer are a part of a cooperative that we used to be a part of, but we do intend to start a new one soon to try and get some better prices on the busing. The remaining appropriation categories include BOSI's, which we've talked about, debt service, contract services, utilities. We're going to talk a little bit about what makes up this $33 million on the next slide, So in BOSI's, we're seeing, BOSI's is really our largest increase, and again, it's related to the shift in student needs. So we're seeing approximately $740,000 increase in BOSI's related to special education services, printer leases. There is a portion of that, as I just mentioned, related to our BOSI's transportation and some additional BOSI's tech support. In tuitions, we're seeing a slight increase in terms of what we see in the rest of the budget of $200,000, and again, related to special education. And utilities, we are projecting a $230,000 increase in terms of expenditures and utilities. A lot of these expenses on this page are being driven by increased student needs and the costs and the rising inflation. So utilities is a direct result of inflation. We're already feeling that this year. We've had this conversation before with the board in terms of the impact that inflation is having on our energy prices, so we have to plan appropriately for that for next year. And then with the materials and supplies and contract services, again, you're seeing an increased need there because, again, student services are way up, and the administrators have asked for additional supplies, additional equipment, and additional contract services to meet those needs. And with all those services, you're seeing increased costs due to supply chain constraints and due to the rising costs of inflation. We do expect this inflation trend to continue, so we're trying to balance this budget to make sure it's appropriately designed to meet those needs next year. The 2022-23 proposed cost element summary, this is kind of how we break down all of the expenditure categories for the board. Up at the top, the salaries. Again, I just wanted to make sure that I reiterate, that's two years of contract settlements, step, contractual step increases for the 22-23 school year, and two years of staffing hires, because there is the additional staff that was hired this year, as well as the additional staff that we are hiring for next year in order to meet the increasing need of these students. I want to highlight an important part here, that the increase in the salaries and the increase in the employee benefits, you're looking at a $6.5 million increase. And the additional foundation aid that the district received in the 21-22 and the 22-23 school year is huge. It allows us to not only add these services, but offset the cost to the community with a favorable low levy, which is what we've been talking about all night, which is trying to get that levy down to something that is more manageable for everybody, given the current economic situation. So I don't want to downplay the increase in foundation aid at all. Yes, it would have been nice to have been getting $8 million every year for the past 12 years, but to get it now, it came at the right time, and it's really helping, it's going to really help the, it's going to really help the students. So it's important for me to make sure that I highlight that. So where you see on the bottom a 4.87% increase in year-over-year on the budget, just know that that number is largely being driven, driven by the needs of the students, but being offset by the additional foundation aid that the district is receiving. So what happens if we go to a contingent budget? The way it works is there's, school districts have two opportunities to pass a budget. The first is in May, and the second is in June. After the first May vote, if the budget were to be voted down, the board would have the option to redesign a new budget or propose the same budget. It's really up to you in terms of what we would go to the public with in June. If that budget were to fail as well, the district goes to what's known as a contingent budget. A contingent budget is a zero increase in the levy year-over-year. So for Farmingdale, that would mean taking the current budget and reducing it by $2.7 million year-over-year. There's a complicated formula in terms of balancing that 2.7. It's not just you take it from one category and you're done. There needs to be a balancing act between the administrative, the instructional, and the capital components that make up school district's expenditures. But just to highlight some of the areas that would be looked at, at first glance, increasing class sizes, reduced elective opportunities, reduced athletics, musical performances, extracurricular activities, elimination of certain equipment purchases and maintenance projects, and reductions in certain support services. Just to go over some proposed legislation that is out there, this was, again, being proposed by the governor during her initial budget. First, there was many proposals. These are three that I felt were important for the community and for the board to know. Electric bus mandates, basically, all new bus purchases to be zero emissions by the year 2027, and that all school buses in operation to be zero emissions by 2035. This is new to be, I mean, there are electric buses out there. There's been talks about electric buses becoming a thing. Not sure how realistic the timeframe is, whether the infrastructure is there or not. This is early stages of conversations that are being had by the busing companies with school district business officials, so there's more to come on this. I don't think it's likely to be passed as of right now with this budget. I think that there's more work that needs to be done at the state level. It's just too new in terms of their introduction of it into the state. The governor has also proposed a general statewide reserve of 15%. We're going to talk next week about school district fund balance and reserves and how all that works. Currently, the schools are allowed to keep 4% of their unappropriated, which, that number is probably 15 years old now. It hasn't been increased in 15 years. It's 4% of the next year's budget that you're allowed to keep in unappropriated. There's a lot of talk, there has been a lot of talk in previous years leading up to this, that 10% should be the number, so the fact that 15% was thrown out there was kind of a surprise for a lot of schools. a surprise for a lot of school districts. But, it would be a welcomed law to be in place, to know that we can, if you have the funding available, go to that level to make sure you can pay your bills and you are securing your programs and services each year. And then lastly, this one's new, homeowner tax rebate credit proposal. So, this would be a rebate check to homeowners that meet certain criteria, one of them being qualified gross income no greater than $250,000, and you have to be enrolled in the basic STAR exemption or credit program, and the amount would be a percentage of that benefit multiplied, multiplied based on the homeowner's income. Just a quick summary of everything that we've talked about tonight. The total proposed budget for the 22, 23 school year is currently 183,442,350, and that's an increase of 8,526,792 over the previous year for a 4.87% increase in budget with a current proposed tax levy increase of 2.06. And again, just to reiterate, we do plan on bringing that down. The 4.87% increase in the year-over-year budget is being supplied in large, that funding is being supplied in large by the additional foundation aid that the district has received over the past two years, really helped out the programs, and we will make sure that we work with the board and with administration in the coming weeks to get that number down to, like I said, underneath the 1.75 that is the current Nassau County average. The current budget calendar for the next couple of weeks is on Wednesday, March 23rd. We will continue this conversation. We'll go over some updated figures regarding the revenue and appropriation side of the budget. We will also go into a little bit more detail of other aspects of our planning, as well as our long-term planning and our fund balances and reserves. At the April 6th meeting, we will, the Board of Education will have the opportunity to adopt a budget for voter approval, and that will be, that's at our regular meeting. And then at the BOSI's, on April 26th, that's the BOSI's administrative budget, every school district that's a component of BOSI's must approve their budget each year. That's a quick, quick 10-minute meeting in the morning just to approve the budget. And then finally, the public hearing, which is the week before the budget vote on Tuesday, May 10th. The budget vote will be in the Howitt West Gymnasium from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And before I answer any questions that the board has or the community, I would like to just make sure that I give a great big thank you to this team, because I didn't get to do it in the beginning, all the work that we did over the last couple of months. It's been a lot. Brian, our school business administrator, Diane, his accountant, they do a lot of the Excel work and a lot of the document preparation, so a huge thank you goes out to them, and of course, to Ro, who works with me in my office to help get all these presentations and materials out to the board and to the community on a timely manner. So, this presentation will be available in the coming days on the district website. The additional binder docs related to the budget will be available after the board adopts the budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think it's Page 12 when you talk about the properties, right? Pilots.
The pilot.
So, do you find, have you found, I can't recall way back, but do the number of pilots seem to be increased a lot in the years, or does, it depends on the year itself, right?
There's no rhyme or reason to how they increase on a yearly basis. There's not a significant change. The biggest change that we were hit with in recent years was the LIPA one. That was the big, that was the big shift, but other than that, it's nominal increases in terms of the number of properties each year. I could always get a number for you, Kathy, on the numbers that we've had over the last several years.
It doesn't matter right now, but I was just wondering because of the amount, too. Has the amount changed dramatically or not?
I can get that number for you.
Sure.
To just see, you know, if we'll go back five, six years, something like that, to just show you the trend. They do go up. That is how a pilot works. As you get older, you pay more money ultimately, and then ultimately, you're supposed to come off the rolls and start paying the full tax value.
And as we get, on Page 33, the event of a defeated budget, how specific, when are we going to get specific as to what might, if the budget doesn't pass?
I think that's a conversation that we'd have to have as a board and administration to really dive into the details. I wouldn't want to speculate as to what would be the first line item to go per se. You know, I don't, I think, I think we'd have to look at the formula together. We'd have to assess where the needs are and then address it appropriately.
Thank you.
Two questions, Mike. With the proposed legislation, the 15%, what is the likelihood of something like that, even if it goes down to 10? Is it looking like it's promising or hard to tell? I mean, you seemed kind of discouraged regarding the electric bus mandate. I'm just curious what the feeling is on.
I honestly don't know the pulse on that one.
Okay.
I don't know the pulse on that one. There, we'll find out in a couple of weeks when the legislative budget is finalized, but I haven't heard much on that.
Okay. Okay. And then lastly, the same thing under the legislation, the homeowner tax rebate, what is that, how is that different from the way it is now? I'm trying to understand.
So, the difference between that and STAR?
Yes.
So, this is an additional check.
Oh, it's an addition to.
It's an additional check. A number of years ago, there was a rebate check associated with school district that stayed within the tax cap calculation. This is similar to that, except it's not tied to a district staying within the calculation.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions on the board? Well, thank you, Mr. Motisi.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Once again, please be sure to clearly state your name when you approach the microphone. The meeting is now open for 30 minutes. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thank you for your comments and concerns. Can I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Miko?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.